Everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, this is the special meeting of the Board of Directors of the Bristol Downtown Development Corporation. We're going to start with the approval of the minutes of our prior meeting. I just want to note for the record that we did not approve the April 30th meeting minutes, but because they're not on the agenda, we cannot do it at this meeting. So at our next meeting, we'll approve the April 30th minutes. But the May 12 regular meeting minutes were distributed. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
Motion to approve, second.
Okay, I did have a couple of quick corrections. The first one being on the item number four. The, right below the rules for participation in the May 30th meeting, the motion, I believe, was not to take comments from the public, because we always take comments from the public, but the motion was to approve the three limit time limit and the rules for speaking. Is that, John, it was your motion, is that a fair characterization?
Absolutely, sir.
Okay. And then, so that correction, and then the only other correction was the motion on page eight to extend the deadline. I believe the motion we approved was to extend the deadline until the next meeting of the BDDC, not necessarily until June 9th. Again, that motion was Frank's motion, is that a fair characterization?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so with those two corrections, can I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Anyone else have corrections, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda, written communications received by board members. Does anyone have anything? Okay, I do. The first, I received two letters that were forwarded to me by the mayor for inclusion in the record. The first one is dated May 31st, 2014. Says, "Dear Mr. Cocaine, my brother Desmond and I are both writing you proposals for the new Bristol Renaissance. As you may know, I have very severe food allergies and a condition called eosinophilic esophagitis. However, over the past 11 years, I have condensed my allergies from 18 to four. Even though I have a limited food diet, I am able to eat safely at two restaurants, Chipotle Mexican Grill and PF Chang's Chinese Bistro. The restaurants are very good, but my family needs to travel about 30 to 40 minutes to eat there, and it can be inconvenient. So I am requesting a reserved place for either Chipotle or PF Chang's in the empty lot near the City Hall and New McDonald's. Thank you, sincerely, Adam DeVille." The second letter is undated. Says, "Dear Mr. Cocaine, my brother Adam and I are proud that you are the mayor of Bristol. We would like to make a request for a store in the future Depot Square. Adam has very severe food allergies to substances found in most foods. He is sensitive to egg, dairy, shellfish, and lamb. Therefore, there are only a few numbered places that we can go out to eat. Chipotle and PF Chang's are the only ones. Adam and I would like to request that PF Chang's and/or Chipotle is set up in Depot Square. They are both quite popular restaurants and would bring good revenue to our city of Bristol. Our lives and many others' lives are very frantic during most times of the year. We can't always cook lunch or dinner. Sometimes we're lost energy or time. Having a restaurant to eat out would make many lives easier and would provide a greater level of happiness in Bristol. Having two more popular restaurants that aren't as far away as West Hartford would also make more jobs for the unemployed in Bristol. I hope you will consider this golden opportunity. I thank you for your most valuable time. Yours truly, Desmond DeVille." I also--
Do you want a motion on those to refer them to our preferred developer?
We can certainly do that.
Just so I understand, the first letter was requesting one of the two restaurants? Or they both would like both restaurants?
The first one was requesting a reserved place for either or.
The second wants both.
Correct.
All right, so that would be quite the task for Renaissance, so I would support Gardner's motion to refer it to Renaissance.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll refer these two letters to Renaissance. Charlie, you can take those back. I also received a copy of a letter to the editor of the Bristol Press dated Friday, June 6th, from Mayor Stortz, a former Mayor Stortz. As the letter was, in fact, I believe, printed in the Bristol Press, I'm not going to read it, but I have a copy available here for the record to the extent that anyone would like to see it. I also received this morning another email from former Mayor Stortz indicating that he's not able to make the meeting tonight and asking that the questions that he had previously submitted be placed into the record again. The questions are the same ones, they're dated April 30th. They're the same ones that he's submitted a couple times. So again, I'm not going to read them for the record, but they're available to the extent that anyone would like to see them. Any other, oh, and I'm sorry. The last written communication I received is that Ryan Porter did forward to me a YouTube link to the Renaissance meeting that was held at Nucci's. So I'm sure Charlie has the exact link, but it was just a link. So to the extent that anyone would like to view the YouTube video, you can either look it up on YouTube, or I'm sure Charlie would be happy to provide a link.
Madam Chairperson?
Yes.
I did forward an article from the Hartford Business Journal to Ryan today. And the article pointed out the somewhat desperate situation that people going to work for Jackson Laboratories have in finding reasonably priced apartments with basic amenities. And talked about one employee in particular who was relocating to Connecticut. And I think it said that he ended up either in New Britain or Middletown. And certainly this project, if it were to go forward, would be much closer. So I sent the article to Ryan, and Ryan sent it back and said that owing to his family situation, he wouldn't be here tonight, but he asked me to at least bring it up. It's in the current issue of the Hartford Business Journal.
You have it, could you forward it to me?
I'll forward it to everybody in the board, sure.
That'd be terrific. Okay. Any other written communications received by board members? Okay, and actually, I am remiss, and I should have started the meeting by saying that I did receive a call from Ryan, and he is a new father as of Sunday. So we offer him our, I think, at least personally, and I think I speak on behalf of the board when I say our sincere and heartfelt congratulations. So that's why he's not here with us tonight.
Boy or girl?
Boy. Next item on the agenda, the opening of the meeting to members of the public who wish to be heard on any agenda item. Has anyone signed to speak?
None.
Terrific. Okay, item five, new business. Treasurers report an action on pending invoices.
Okay, we do have some invoices from our proposal staff, from our executive director for the next month. We have an invoice for 15 hours for a total of $2,400. And I would move for payment of that amount.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's approved?
Okay. From our attorneys, we have an invoice for $13,365. Of course, there's been a lot of work on trying to figure out how we work through all the problems. I had the number of hours, and I just wanted to--
59.4.
59.4 hours. And I would move for the payment of $13,365.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed?
No, it should pass. And our third bill for our secretarial help in the amount of $187.50. And I would move for approval of that amount.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I will say that I did get a letter, email, from our insurance carrier, and we have renewed our policy, our liability policy, for another year at a savings of about $300.
Terrific.
Now that we're getting in over our head, they're going to charge us less for the insurance, which I think is a good deal. I just want to notify you.
Or maybe now they know they really think we know what we're doing.
Excellent. Okay, the next item on the agenda is discussion of Renaissance's request for an extension of time to submit a proposed financing development and leasing plan and to take any necessary action.
Madam Chairman, isn't usually an executive director's report at this point?
There is, but it was not added to the agenda, and it's a special meeting, so I can't add it. That and the minutes of the April 30th meeting, which were left off. We'll have to pass till next time. Discussion of Renaissance's request for an extension of time to submit a proposed finance development and lease plan and take any necessary action. As the board no doubt recalls, at the last meeting on May 12th, we voted to provide an extension to Renaissance through our next meeting and for the attorneys to attempt to work out the terms of that extension. There were some negotiations, if you will, that went on concerning what would be done during the timeframe of that extension. And I participated in some of those discussions, and John Lodevico participated in some of those discussions. And what I believe we're going to recommend to the board, and I'm going to put it out there and we can discuss it, is that we approve an extension through January as requested by Renaissance with a milestone of August 15th for the submission of what we call sort of a 70% financing plan for the building of Building B. Which is, if you recall, they've submitted a plan, which is sort of 70% of the way done, for Building A, which is the 101 apartment units. We have requested, what would a financing plan skeleton look like for Building B, which is the building that has about 20,000 square feet of commercial retail, plus apartments, plus the piazza. I think that there's been a lot of discussion from the public, a lot of desire to see what the, you know, to push for commercial first, and we sort of didn't want to make that decision in a vacuum. The original plan was that we were thinking about giving them until September to make that submission, and then having this board evaluate the Building A, Building B, decide which was sort of the better proposal, if you will. And then giving Renaissance through January to go forward and do the firm financing, you know, get a commitment letter from the bank, get construction financing, and do all of that. I did hear from the mayor, and he has indicated to me, and said that I can say publicly, that he intends to request that any request for public financing on this project, he intends to request the City Council to place the issue on the ballot for referendum. If he is going to place the issue, or cause the issue to be placed on the ballot for referendum, the drop dead date for having that done is August 27th. So therefore, we can't give Renaissance until September to submit information with respect to the Building B building, because then it wouldn't have enough time to review and approve to get on the ballot. So we, the recommendation that I'm prepared to make is that we set the milestone date to be August 15th, and that gives us enough time to decide whether Building A goes on the ballot, Building B goes on the ballot. They both can maybe go on the ballot, maybe there's two questions. I mean, that's all going to be up to the City Council to work out, but at least I think that there's enough information with respect to both buildings to make at least an informed choice. So that's pretty much where we are.
Madam Chairwoman, if I could add one thing about the purpose of those, the extension, those discussions too?
Sure.
Was that one of the key parts of that timeline that everybody was discussing was that this information could be made available to the citizens of Bristol in a timely fashion so that they could see what the proposals were and have an opportunity to review and comment and give their feedback back to the council and the BDDC.
Correct.
Can I ask a question?
Of course you can.
And that is, are we on the same path as the council? They were also part of the negotiations, or the attorney?
The city's attorney participated, and Councilman Martin participated in the discussions.
And this proposal for partial arrangements, hopefully, to the financing for Building B, which is a new issue, that has come up, because they were only proposing Building A.
They only proposed Building A, and what I think we heard, and what I believe even, and I don't want to speak for him, but what I believe he acknowledged he heard was that there's a substantial contingent of folks that want to see commercial retail built as part of the first whatever that gets built. So we asked them to take a look at, what would it take? We've been told that it's going to take $6 million of public money to do Building A, so we've asked, what is it going to take to do Building B?
And the developer has, is in agreement with the plan as well?
Yes, that they would put together a, again, not a final firm 100%, but they would give us as much information as they've given us with respect to the A proposal to put into the Building B, so that we can evaluate both and say, we want to go down this path, or we want to go down this path. Neither is a commitment that we're going to do either. At the end of the day, you know, we may say, okay, Building B just never is going to work, go firm up all your financing for Building A. They may do that, it may come before us. We may ultimately vote no, the council may ultimately vote no. If it goes to referendum, I, you know, at that point, I don't know what happens. But it's just, we wanted more information on the dropping of the commercial retail.
And as long as they are in agreement with it, I don't want to hear the 1st of September that the proposal was not what they had agreed to, and they have different difficulties with it, and it creates a problem for us of some kind.
Well, Gardner, I mean, if I could jump in, we're not guaranteeing that, and not to put Renaissance on the spot, that they may not have issues with the deadline, but we're certainly not imposing this on them. We've asked them if they would be amenable to presenting that information to Bristol so that Bristol could evaluate the two proposals. And it's a question of Bristol may say, we want to do 1A, we want to do 1B, we don't want to do either of them, but, so that Renaissance has a fair opportunity to put their best proposal forward. The citizens, the BDDC, and the council can then evaluate how much public money has to go into each. Are they prepared to commit to that type of public financing and what they want to do?
And this is an extension until January, effectively?
Of the deadline for a submission, does he have--
No, of the deadline for a closing on the property.
Yes.
Oh, that's right.
Because if they're going to close in January, they would have to submit a final financing plan with commitments about either of these two phases, if we go forward with either of them. So that hypothetically speaking, if they get support for 1A, and they go forward, and the city would say, would like to see this, they'd still have to come up with a financing plan, bank commitments, tell everybody exactly how they're going to pay for it, and then the closing would take place in January. So when that final plan is presented, the BDDC and the City Council still have an opportunity to say, yes, we vote to approve that financing plan, no, we vote not to approve that financing plan. But so that Renaissance isn't just putting together a final plan and crossing their fingers and hoping this is what everybody wants, they're getting some direction from the city parties as to what they'd like to see.
Okay. Gardner, so you're concerned, what, is that this is the first Renaissance's hearing of this?
Well, I wanted to make sure there was a--
Yeah, well, that's why I'm just asking the question. I think all of this has been discussed in the meetings, other than possibly the referendum, it may not have come up, I don't remember if it did or not, within the meetings of a confined group we're meeting with.
No, but as soon as, as soon as the mayor made the indication to me that he was going to ask the council to put it on the ballot, I immediately called Ryan, I believe Dave also called him.
I hate to use the word surprise, there's no surprises here. We're trying, both parties are trying to work to move this thing along.
Madam Chairwoman, Chairwoman. Tim Carey, Representative for Renaissance Downtown, had to answer Commissioner Red's question. We are aware of the implications of the request and the timeline. The timeline is a challenge, but the meetings we've had with the smaller group have been very collaborative and positive. Some very interesting ideas have been vetted. Also some ideas that the committee, members of the committee have made clear that might help them in evaluating and making a recommendation, which the BDC is ultimately being asked to do. So is it a challenge to Renaissance? Sure, but that's what we asked for in the process, to be able to meet like we are and to vet interesting ideas, good ideas. And August 15th will be a challenge. Ryan, assuming that everything went well with the birth Sunday, is going to try to meet that challenge as they've done. The committee is going to continue to meet, to vet some of the ideas in the process. And so from that point of view, Renaissance is going to try to meet that challenge and has been very happy with the collaborative way that we've engaged in the past six weeks. And very positive with the process and the process itself. So in the end, we'll, we all be on the same page. I guess the data, the data will tell. But so far, I think it's been a very good process.
Can I answer your question?
I think so, yes. As well as it can be answered, yes.
I congratulate the people who were involved in the discussions, because I think that's a, that's a good way to go. I think the possibility of 1B being built first, first of all, is a more commanding presence downtown along Main Street. Secondly, it adds the retail element, which seems to be very important to the people, these are the people I've heard from, that they'd like to see the retail with residential as opposed to strictly residential with just a very tiny retail component. So that's a good way to go. We'll let them come back to us with a proposal on that. See where we go.
I think that part of the concerns that we heard, you know, from the public, and at least part of my concerns, is I didn't, I didn't want to have to choose Building A without at least exploring. I didn't want to get to the end, and whether the vote was yes or no, have somebody say, well, you didn't even look at, you know, why didn't this happen first? You didn't even look at it. So I just, you know, I want to look at it. I think Renaissance feels that it's probably not possible. If it is, that's what the data will show. But I at least wanted to have the data, again, speaking for me and not for the board, but--
No, and you are correct. We tried to look at every feasible possibility. Bottom line was to make this thing move forward. And both sides collaborated, blowing back and forth, and good, five, six hours of conversation at both meetings, three meetings, two meetings, however many meetings it was. I feel the same as Frank Johnson just mentioned. I think, I feel it's, B would be the way to go, let's see what happens.
I think the other changes to the PDA that would be required if one or the other of these went forward, we can deal with after we get the submission.
Well, I believe that, at least in the construct we're envisioning, is that they're going to, by August 15th, submit sort of the same type of plan for B that was submitted for A. And then at our September meeting, you know, the public will have an opportunity to review. I have no idea what's going to go on the ballot, if anything. We leave that to the City Council. But at our September meeting, we'll discuss the two and choose a path, so to speak. And then that will be the path that is focused on by Renaissance and as part of the final finance development and leasing plan that would have to come in with a request for the specific amendments that are required to each section of the PDA. And all of that would have to be amended prior to the ability to close.
And importantly, when the plan's submitted in August, we, the BDDC probably won't be meeting until September after they get the plan. But I believe Renaissance is in agreement that when the pro forma for 1B is submitted, that's going to be a public document, just like 1A was public, so that everybody in Bristol will have an opportunity to see and fairly evaluate. Because again, at the public comment, there were a lot of questions about, why can't we do 1B? And the proposal that Renaissance put forward may show that 1B is feasible, or it may make it clear to everybody why 1B isn't feasible. But I believe everybody's in agreement that when that comes out in August, that's going to be a public document, no matter when the City Council or the BDDC may be able to meet and talk about it.
And then certainly at the September meeting, we will take public comment on the submission.
And since we haven't had that discussion with Ryan or Mr. Monty, but given it seems to be your wish, I will. I'm prepared for that in mind, but that discussion I have not--
Madam Chairwoman, the deadline for it to be put on the November ballot is when, August?
I've been advised it's August 27th.
Yeah. I don't have my notes with me on this one, so--
So with the submission on the 15th, that's enough? And obviously, well, hopefully, you'll share it with the City Councils so that they'll be able to do whatever it is they need to do. If they decide to go that route. I'm not saying that they are, it's a foregone conclusion. I want to be clear, the only information I have is that the mayor has indicated he is going to request it of the council.
And that's a separate discussion, but that's certainly not within the realm of your recommendation.
No, has nothing to do with--
We appreciate--
Has nothing to do with this board. Other comments, questions?
So there's been no alterations to the PDA yet?
There's been no amendments to the PDA, other than the amendment that was approved to extend the time. And then assuming that this board is willing to go forward on this basis, the vote tonight would be to further amend the PDA to provide an extension through January with a milestone date of August 15th for submission of the 1B preliminary financing plan, I'll call it.
With the idea that, also if I may add, we'd negotiate, if we get to that point, other milestones between August and January. For example, there was a change in terms of getting the pro forma for 1B out in August. We were originally contemplating September, but we weren't aware of the City Council's, or the mayor's desire, at least, to possibly put it on the ballot, so that changed that discussion. But eventually, what we'll need to do is agree on, prior to January, a date for the final leasing and development plan to be submitted so we can see what the financing will be, so that we can close. All of that has to be in place before the closing can take place. I believe we were sort of tentatively talking about, depending on how everything fleshed out, getting that final financing plan sometime in December, so that the closing and certain activities could take place in January to facilitate that.
Based on the nature of what the Building B review shows and the things that have to be accomplished or achieved, whichever likely path we choose, it could, we will not have a problem to operate to come up with the next set of milestones based on the first two meetings we had.
Exactly, in fairness to Renaissance, if the city does decide to ask them to put together a final plan for 1B, I would imagine there's going to be different work than they were anticipating for 1A in order to get to a closing and to put financing in place. So I think that's why we were saying, there will be other discussions and there will be other milestones between now and January, but people have to figure out what road they're going to go down.
All right, I just need a clarification on something. We've asked, we set the milestone as August 15th for them to submit something for 1B.
Correct.
August 27th is the drop dead date for a referendum.
That's what we've been told.
That's what we've been told.
But we will not have met to make a recommendation or even to take public comment on the first plan or the second plan before the council goes forward and tries to figure out what to put on there for a referendum.
Correct. What the, what the mayor was considering, I believe, for, was putting the issue of, should there be public funding for the Depot Square project as a referendum question? And in the discussion that I had with the mayor, I felt that a fairer question would be, should there be public funding for just Building A residential? Or should there be public funding for Building B residential commercial? Because I think there are at least some people that are going to give you a different answer. You know, they may say, no, Building A, they may say, yes, you know, we're willing to put money into Building B. So I had suggested that maybe the referendum is two ballot questions, and I at least wanted the information out there. I have no idea what he's going to recommend, I have no idea what the City Council's going to do. It may just end up being a, should there be public money for Depot Square? I don't know. But I wanted the information to be available so that they can at least make a reasonable ballot question out of it.
Do you expect the 1A to change with the proposal for the 1B? The financial proposal?
As the way it stands now? I don't believe so, Tim, you would probably be better to answer that. Are you, you're not going to be making any changes to the 1A proposal that was submitted between now and August, are you?
I think that would depend, because the work group, if you will, is continuing to meet. And Ryan is continuing to explore some of the options regarding funding of Building A that have been discussed in those meetings. So if something comes about based on his follow-up, the other questions you've asked, the answer that I guess could be yes, but once he, you know, probably moved a lot of his concentration to giving you the analysis of Building B to help the, you know, the process. So I think a little of that's going to go on, but in the next six weeks, Ryan's spending more of his time on preparing the pro forma for Building B, so you've got a dual analysis of that. So yes, it could change, but I think his time is going to be stretched.
Other comments, discussion? Councilman Martin, you're eerily silent.
Is there a motion?
There's not a motion. I mean, I guess we're speaking for myself, and if I may be so bold speaking for John, we're requesting a motion on this basis. We do need to take some kind of-- We do need to take some kind of action because the, the extension that we previously passed has expired. So the motion would be to recommend a further extension to the city council on no terms, some terms, the terms we've outlined. That's what's before the board right now.
Renaissance is asking for a motion similar to what you outlined a bit earlier for an extension to January for the initial closing and financing plan, but contingent on meeting the milestones that are set by this committee and the, and the working group starting with the August fifteenth milestone, provide you some information for Building B.
Just going back to the, the extension that was passed at the last meeting, was a extension until our next meeting for the attorneys to work out the terms of a further extension.
So the January, we're using the month, are we, are we going to get more specific than that? Is it by, the closing takes place by the end of January?
Yes.
I, I think it would be fair to say, like, to say January thirty-one, twenty fifteen.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we extend the timeline.
Deadline for the initial closing.
Yeah, for the initial closing to January thirty-one, two thousand and fifteen, provided that the milestones that have been discussed and agreed to tonight by the working group, including the August fifteenth, they be adhered to.
It's a motion to recommend to the council that we extend. I don't believe we have unilateral authority to extend.
I think that's what I said.
Okay, just making sure.
The way first is the same thing.
Thirty.
Do we want to, do we want to mention seventy percent of financing, at least by our August fifteenth meeting?
Well, I, I think importantly, we're requesting Renaissance agree to produce a pro forma.
Okay, fine.
You know.
I just want to make sure we're all on the same here when we're doing this, all right?
Preliminary financing plan.
That's fine, fine, fine with me.
For Building B.
All right, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Anyone? Hearing none?
I feel this is the way to go. I mean, we're moving the project forward. Both sides are working diligently to make this project happen.
No other discussion?
If, going back to the August fifteenth date, if they submit the plan, the Building B proposal by the fifteenth, should we have a meeting the week of the eighteenth before it goes to the city council to look at it?
John thinks we should.
See, that's a good point. Not that I want to muddy the water up here, but I, and I was around in, in August and August is a big vacation month to begin with, but I think we should. I mean, this is something that's going to happen once and.
We, let's say that the board will use best efforts to call a special, I'll be around, I'm not, yeah. So, but I'll say that as a board, we'll use best efforts to call a meeting.
I think, I feel more comfortable doing that, we keep everything, we're, everybody hears everything.
And I think with the working groups working, we'll be able to make a better call about how to structure the meeting and what to do, we pick a date once we get closer.
Good, very good.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The last item on the agenda is discussion of Renaissance's proposed changes to face one of the final concept plan and to take any necessary action.
Before we get into that, I would just like to bring a little information up about my report because I didn't report on our overall budget and the fact that there was thirty thousand included in the city budget for fiscal year fifteen. I think we have slightly over forty-two thousand now. We've got the month of June, it was still in current expenses. So it looks like we'll have about seventy thousand for fiscal year July fourteen to six thirty fifty. We should keep that number in mind because it will be a very tight budget, given all the things we're talking about here.
Excellent point. Okay, item C, discussion of proposed changes to face one of the final concept plan, take any necessary action. Is there discussion to be had on this issue?
Candidly, I put that on the agenda because if people were not going to vote for the extension, you'd have to have some discussion about.
Okay, that's why I'm confused.
The, the proposal, what?
I said, that's why I was confused, I get it now.
Yes.
Okay, so, is there anything anyone wants to discuss on that? Hearing none, the last item on the agenda is adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.
Given we're adjourned, I would like the courtesy of Boyd. This is the last meeting I'll be attending. I am resigning as executive director. I'm moving into retirement. My own and Nick Berube can be consulted whether they wish to continue and assign somebody else. But I just want to say I've enjoyed working with the group and that best wishes, moving forward. Thank you.
Dick, we thank you for your service, we could not have gotten here without you. And I guess we've known that you, you've hung on to this project and delayed your retirement for us and we very much appreciate that, shows your dedication and your service.
Thank you.
Dick, personally, I want to thank you for all the guidance you gave this board, especially myself in terms of your expertise in running different, or being project directors of different projects. It's been a big benefit to this board and I feel to Bristol and to the state of Connecticut. Thank you for your service.
Thank you for everything, Dick, appreciate it.
Gardner.
Now Gardner mentioned he's retiring, I said, the world is losing two good men.
If you're really retiring, are you looking for a nice urban setting apartment?